Just pop your camera off, that's absolutely fine. I'll leave you to sort that for yourselves. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jo Barclay. I'm the Head of Education, Safeguarding and Wellbeing. I think probably you do all know me by now. So, welcome to the Autumn Term Online Safeguarding Briefing. Okay, Derry, I will ask you to put up the slides, please. As usual, we will monitor the chat. So if you've got any questions, then pop those in the chat. And Alex and Derry, who are with me this afternoon, will monitor that. And they will interject at an appropriate point. We've also got Liz Kirby from the Essex Safeguarding Children Board with us this afternoon. And she's going to talk to you about the new effective support document, which hopefully you've all picked up the new version by now. That came out on the 1st of October. It has gone out to all settings. So Liz will be talking about that. And also some learning from one of the Child Safeguarding Practice Reviews that we've had here in Essex. So I will hand over to Liz for the last half an hour of the session. Okay, so we will make a start because we have a lot to get through as usual. So first, just move on, please, Derry. Again. Thank you. So I'm just going to talk very briefly about the team because we've had some changes. And I just wanted to make you aware of that, really. So, as you know, the safeguarding team is a county-wide team. We have had some new posts agreed for the team because it's recognised that in terms of capacity, it has been a bit of a struggle in terms of the amount of work that comes through the team on the number of people that we've got. So we have increased from two safeguarding advisers, so an adviser covering two quadrants, to having four safeguarding advisers, one in each quadrant. So we have Derry, whom many of you will know. She's already, she joined us over a year ago now, and has been working in the North East and Mid. She will retain the North East and is currently covering the Mid Quadrant. And then Emma, Emma Rolls, joined us this Monday. So she's hot off the press. She's with us this afternoon as well. And Emma will be taking over West. She'll be working over in the west of the county. Alex, who was previously covering South and West, is still covering South and is working alongside Emma in the West while she's inducted. And we have two new quadrant advisers starting with us in January, at the beginning of January. So obviously I'll bring details of them to you once they start with the team. So Alex, meanwhile, has taken over a new training lead role. And that is because, again, that's a new post. And that's because we are offering a huge amount of training now. And we, again, we need someone to just work on that, really. And also because we have launched the Level Three Training this term. And I'll talk to you about that in more detail in a bit. But Matt Lewis, who, again, many of you will know, Matt is still with the team, of course, and he retains his role around strategic support. And that is specifically around work with the ESCB, with the Essex Safeguarding Children Board, and also around Prevent and Channel Panel. And then we've got Gemma, who sits in the team and works on domestic abuse. So high incidence of domestic abuse in relation to the MARAC, the Multi-Agency Risk Assessment Conference. And more recently, she's been supporting around the work of OpIn Compass, Operation In Compass. And again, I'll talk about that later on in the session. Just a reminder of the team email address there, education-safeguarding@essex.gov.uk. And please use that if you want to make contact. If you do have anything serious or, and/or urgent, and you need to get hold of me, then please email me and the safeguarding team, either email me and copy them in, or vice versa. And somehow, you know, it will reach me. But just make sure, don't send it just to me in case it's missed because I spend most of my life in meetings. Okay, and then just the link there for Essex Schools Info Link. And just a reminder, for those of you who are newer to the role, that there are lots of safeguarding information on that, on Info Link. There's a dedicated safeguarding area. So if you haven't been on there, please do go on and have a look at the resources and materials on there because hopefully that will be helpful to you. Thanks, Derry.
Jo, just before you go on, could I just ask everybody, please, to use the link in the chat to sign in for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, so I've just left in here a couple of slides that we used back in the summer, actually. So I'm not going to go through them in great detail. But they just set out the updates to keeping children safe in education. So as you know, we had an updated version in September, as we do every September. And as I said, in the summer, there have been relatively few changes this year. The changes really were around aligning Keeping Children Safe to other key documents. So specifically Working Together, because Working Together was updated at the end of 2023. So there were changes around, oh, sorry, we've got the slide back. There were changes around the definition of safeguarding. So the majority of changes in this year's Keeping Children Safe in Education were really to align it to other safeguarding guidance documents. So I think probably that's the main thing that I'd like to highlight there. And the paragraph numbers are there. So you can go in and have a look at this when you get the slides. But as I say, you've all picked up the new version of Keeping Children Safe. The model child protection policy and all the other key resources have been updated, of course, to reflect the new Working Together and the updated Keeping Children Safe guidance. Next slide, please, Derry. So as I say, I'm not going to go into any detail there specifically around that. Okay, thanks, thanks, Derry. So you'll know that we always bring you an update on Prevent at each termly briefing. So just a reminder of the language around this. And apologies for those of you who have attended briefings before because you'll know that I say this every time. But I'm conscious that not everyone will have attended or heard this previously. So I'm the Prevent Lead for Education. I receive, along with other organisations, Prevent Leads briefing from the Home Office and from Prevent Police. And they share with us information from the CTLP, the Counter-Terrorism Local Profile. And that's a highly confidential document. I'm not able to share that with you in its entirety. I don't see it in its entirety. But there are levels of access, layers of access. But we are able to bring you headline data. So that's helpful for you, hopefully, because as education settings, you need a risk assessment around Prevent. And we bring you the local updates so that you are able to include that in your risk assessment. So while I'm talking about risk assessments, I just want to remind you that there are templates for you to use. And they are available on Essex School Info Link. There are two versions on there. Well, there are two authors on there, let's say, because there's more than one version. Because there are versions for primary, secondary and early years. So the Home Office produced a risk assessment for settings. And that's absolutely fine. And alongside that, we also produced our own version because we had already written it. And we're all the verge of sharing that with settings when the Home Office shared their template. So as I say, there's nothing wrong with the Home Office one at all. But the Essex one is probably a little bit shorter, a little bit more user-friendly. And the other thing with the Essex one is that we pre-populate it with some information for you. So hopefully that's helpful. That's something we started this term. And we will update it each time the CTLP is updated and shared with us. So as I say, hopefully that's helpful. So in terms of the update itself, then, as you can see there, the UK's rate level remains as substantial. And it's been substantial for over a couple of years now. There has been an increase in referrals across the region. So we sit in the eastern region for Prevent. Or we sit in the eastern region for lots of things, but also for Prevent. And as you can see there, there's been a 12% increase in referrals. In terms of referrals from education across the region, there's been an increase in Islamist extremism ideology referrals and a decrease in extreme right-wing ideology and also MUU. MUU is mixed, unclear and unstable. And in fact, in Essex, we had the largest decrease in that category. But what that means is that there is no established, it's not been possible to establish any one ideology. Or where there may be, there may be an established ideology, but multiple, more than one. So as I say, Essex had the largest increase in that category, interestingly. The MUU referrals have been on the increase since going into lockdown. So there's been an upward trend over the last three, four years. So it'd be interesting to see what the data looks like next time that's released. The majority of cases, and it is the vast majority of cases, are found to have a vulnerability present in terms of the individual that's referred in. But there has been no counter-terrorism ideology or risk identified. So you can see from that that once the police have investigated the referrals and done their assessment, that actually it's a minority that then progress into Channel Panel or another intervention. The individuals that are referred, those that do not progress in terms of a Prevent process, may be signposted to other services in terms of the vulnerability that's been identified. So that may be around a mental health issue or perhaps a specific learning difficulty. So there may be another service that it's appropriate for that individual to work with. But Prevent is around counter-terrorism ideology and risk. So in terms of the Channel Panel, extreme right-wing is the most prevalent ideology seen in Channel Panel. And that's regional. And I think probably that applies to Essex as well. Certainly, we do have extreme right-wing cases coming through Channel Panel. Please bear in mind that all these numbers are very, very low. So when I'm talking about this, I mean, you can see there in terms of Essex data, there were 15 referrals from education over the last period. And so, you know, in terms of thinking about numbers, do bear in mind that we are talking about very low numbers in terms of Prevent. We've had the largest decrease in extreme right-wing in Essex. And then what is key for us in the education world, really, is the age of the referrals of the individuals that are being referred in. So as you can see there, around 50% across the whole system, so across each stage of the process, are for under 18-year-olds. And then 21% are for 18 to 24-year-olds. And actually, that's pretty consistent data. So if you look at the last two, three periods, data over the last two, three periods, around 70 to 75% of referrals into the Prevent Police have been for under 25-year-olds. So in terms of us in education, you can see, A, we're the highest referrers. But that group is very much, that's the profile in terms of cases going into the Prevent Police team. Okay, thanks, Derry. So I wanted to touch on attendance. And we have talked about this before at previous safeguarding briefings. So we do cover this in more detail in the Level Three Training. But I wanted to focus today on the new statutory guidance, Working Together to Improve Attendance. And even from the title, but when you look at the language in the guidance document itself, you will see that it's very much the language around safeguarding. It's very much aligned to Keeping Children Safe in Education. As I say, even the title, Working Together to Improve Attendance, there are clear links there, Working Together to Safeguard Children. So the statutory guidance came out in, or took effect from August this year. And again, many of you will have an attendance role. We're not going to go through it in terms of an attendance response. But the focus today is around the links to safeguarding. And clearly, attendance is linked to safeguarding, or absence is linked to safeguarding. So the document itself sets out that attendance is everyone's business. And it describes it as the essential foundation to positive outcomes for pupils. And as you can see there, specific reference to safeguarding and welfare. I mean, we know, and have been saying for a very long time, absence is in itself a safeguarding issue, potentially. It has a negative impact on a child's outcomes and on their life chances generally. It's not good in terms of their socialisation, their development, obviously their academic achievement, but also their welfare and their wellbeing and sometimes mental health. So we know that attendance is important for all those reasons. But absence can also mask an underlying safeguarding issue. And the very obvious examples are where a child has bruising and will be kept off school so that other adults, professionals do not have sight of those bruises. They may be kept off school to create an opportunity to sexually abuse a child and so on. And I think this document, in terms of the themes in the document and the approach in the document, it strengthens our view, really, around multi-agency response to absence. Because absence is not just an education issue. So some absence will be fairly straightforward in terms of term-time holidays, for example. But when you're talking about absence in the context of parental neglect, then that clearly requires a multi-agency response. And that's something we've been saying for a very long time. And that's an approach that this document supports and strengthens. So as you can see there, the document does recognise that some pupils will find it harder to attend school than others. And it recognises attendance as an important protective factor. And you'll know, again, I've talked about this before, but education is a huge protective factor in a child's life. We did not need more evidence of that. But we had more evidence of that from the Child Safeguarding Practice Reviews that were undertaken on the children who died due to abuse during lockdown. And we know that when children do not have the protective factor of an education setting, be that school or nursery or an alternative provision, but they do not have the eyes and ears of professionals and trusted adults looking out for them, then they are placed at additional risk. And particularly children with additional vulnerabilities, anyway. And as I say, in the context of neglectful behaviour. So the guidance talks about the fact that settings should work with parents and children to have high standards of attendance. And that's about culture, isn't it? And setting high expectations around attendance from the very start. We're running the Early Years Safeguarding Briefings at the moment because we run termly briefings for early years settings too. And we're bringing this discussion into the early years briefing. So of course, the children aren't of statutory school age. But it's really important that they start to introduce and set expectations around regular attendance at that very early age because it has to start there, doesn't it? So it's helpful for you to know. I think that we're having those discussions with early years too. So in terms of your own setting, think about how you set that high expectation and the high standards of good attendance for parents and pupils in your setting. Settings need to understand and remove barriers to attendance. So it's about assessing, looking at absence in your school and getting under the reasons for the absence. They need to build strong and trusting relationships. And again, that reflects the language, the safeguarding language in Keeping Children Safe in Education. And also the next point, again, you can see the link with Keeping Children Safe in Education, right support at the right time, and recognition that absence is a symptom of wider issues. And then it talks about formalising support where interventions have not, other interventions have not been successful. And then enforcing attendance. And we're not going to go into that in great detail because, as I say, this isn't about attendance. It's about safeguarding. And you will have heard that information elsewhere. Thanks, Derry. So the document, as I said, sets expectations on schools and settings. And just a reminder that I've added there in terms of governance around that and the fact that governing bodies and trusts have strategic responsibility and oversight of attendance. So what is the approach at governing body and trust level to attendance in your setting? So again, you can see here, talk about strong relationships and working jointly with families, removing barriers, early help approach. It talks again about culture and high expectations. There should be a clear attendance policy. So again, in terms of your setting, think about what your attendance policy looks like. Does it include everything you would want it to include? To be really clear about the expectations in your setting? And is it accessible to all staff and parents and children? Is it easily accessible? Do they understand what you are requiring of them? There needs to be regular monitoring and analysis of attendance and absence data. And I think the point I'd want to make there is that it's important to, when you're thinking about your response to absence, that it's not just a response in terms of improving attendance. That absence data has got to be looked at through a child protection lens as well. Because potentially, it could be a child protection issue. It could be masking a child protection issue. So if you're not the attendance and the safeguarding lead, and I know many of you are, and particularly if you're a primary school head teacher, for example, but many of you will have that dual role. But if in your setting, it's two different people, where's the join-up in that? Where's the join-up in attendance and safeguarding? And how are you having those conversations in school? How are you ensuring that there is a safeguarding response as well as an attendance response to pupil absence? So think about that in your setting. The document introduces the senior attendance champion role. And you can decide whether you like the champion in the title. I don't, but that's what they've chosen to call it. And then lastly, on that slide, they are talking about additional support for children with additional vulnerabilities and additional needs. So again, it's about knowing your children and getting underneath the absence of each individual case. Okay, so it's really important how you're using that data and having those conversations in the setting. Thanks, Derry. So in terms of multi-agency working, and I touched on this earlier, the document is a theme that runs throughout the document. And it's a theme, of course, that runs throughout Keeping Children Safe in Education and Working Together. So it talks about a collaborative culture, early help services, and putting the needs of children and family at the core. And very much a think-family approach. And then it talks about staff training and development across early help services and how we develop that. And having clear success measures as part of individual and family plans. And how those plans are owned across other agencies, not just education. And then recognition that families have, some families have multiple needs. And what's the holistic package? What's the holistic plan, risk assessment around those children and those families in order to achieve the best outcomes for them? So I think in terms of your approach in school or your setting, it's around trying to engage other agencies as far as you're able. And I know that's not always easy. But this document does, I think, is helpful in reinforcing the need for it to be a multi-agency approach. And for your information, I did present this at the Statutory Partners Board, ESCB Statutory Partners Board, about three weeks ago. And I'm taking it to the ESCB Executive Board next month. So these conversations are taking place at that strategic level because we are raising it with other agencies in terms of a multi-agency response being required. So hopefully that is helpful. But there is lots of work going on around this. So I hope that is somewhat reassuring to you. Obviously, we'll update you on that as and when there is progress around that. Thanks, Derry. So I'll just pause there. Are there any questions on attendance or any comments before I move on?
No, none.
Okay, fine. So OpIn Compass. So OpIn Compass is a national programme. And I've talked about it before. So many of you will be familiar with the term. We've been trying to introduce it for some time in Essex. And we have been in discussion with Essex Police for, well, a very long time about how we can introduce it. The Victims and Prisoners Act earlier this year placed OpIn Compass into law. So there's now a statutory requirement for all police forces to operate it. And Essex Police introduced it on the 1st of October. And we did write out to you at that time with instructions about how to sign up. And on the next slide, I won't go through the next slide. But on the next slide, we've And on the next slide, I won't go through the next slide, but on the next slide, we've repeated the instructions there. Uh, for, for anyone who didn't pick that up from the bulletin. Because it is important that you do sign up in order to receive the notifications. So I'm meeting regularly uh with Essex Police to review how this is going. And um, myself and social care uh, uh, and police are, are meeting monthly at the moment to review this. And last time I met with them a couple of weeks ago, they had uh received around two hundred and fifty settings. Uh, that had signed up. We, we've been promoting it in briefings and through the bulletins. Uh, so hopefully that will have greatly increased by the time I meet with them again in a couple of weeks. So uh, as you can see there, as of a couple of weeks ago, there have been forty-one um notifications that have gone out to settings. Uh, initially, Essex Police were just sending high-risk notification, uh, high-risk incidents. Excuse me, um, but they are planning to extend that to medium risk this month. I think they started this week, but it may be next week, um, depending on capacity within the team. But that was certainly their hope. There was training earlier this week, um, yesterday, was it? Day before, I've lost track, uh, which some of you may have attended, hopefully. And um. They, I, I think probably we will run some training, uh, uh, we'll do an online session in January. Just in terms of an operational response, because I think that might be helpful for, for settings. And I've had a few emails uh just asking about procedures really. So we will offer that. Alex, just remind me, have we fixed a date for that?
We have, it's the twenty-seventh of January at eleven o'clock.
Thank you. So it'll be online. Is that on the booking system yet?
Uh, potentially not, but I will check. It will go on very soon.
Well, we'll share that with you, um, and uh, one, once it's on there, uh, uh, as I say, hopefully that will uh iron out any. Um, and, and any outstanding questions really, but it's a really good thing it's been introduced. Um, uh, uh, anything that uh supports children and, and keeps them safer is obviously a good thing. And um, we uh, we're, we're pleased that we've, um, you know, that it's finally been launched really. There, there will probably be a few initial teething problems as there is with all these things, but uh. Uh, I think, I think in the main it's a really positive thing. I, I have updated the model child protection policy with a statement about Opin Compass. So please do, uh, please do make sure that if you are, if you have signed up and that you are receiving notifications. That you have updated your child protection policy, because that just provides a. A, a level of protection for you in terms of informing parents that, I'm sorry, I'm going to put the light on, I'm sitting in the dark. Um, in terms of informing parents that you are part of that, uh, that scheme. The, the idea is that police will notify a school director of any child who's been involved in a police-attended domestic abuse. Uh, incident, uh, ideally before nine o'clock the following day. So you are able to provide support to that child, um. Subtle support, I would say, because you shouldn't be speaking to the child specifically about the incident. Um, but it's just, it just means that you have some knowledge and understanding of what may have happened in the home. The, the, the prev- in the previous twenty-four hours really. Um, so as I say, it's a positive thing and please make sure that you have signed up. If uh, you know, please do sign up if you haven't already, because it is, it is important. Uh, that, um, that you do that and then you'll start to receive the notifications. Okay, thanks, uh, Derry. And there's the instructions, as I say, I won't go through that, um, but, but you'll receive it when you receive the slides. Or you can go to the latest bulletin on um, on Essex School Info Link. In fact, we're sending a bulletin out this week, can't we? So it's repeated in there as well, if, if that's helpful. Okay, thanks, Derry. So just an update on MARAC, uh, while we're talking about domestic abuse, so Multi-Agency Risk Assessment Conference. And this is the um, the, the MARAC is the Local Authority Risk Assessment Process. It's actually uh, uh, around adults. It puts a support plan around the victim of domestic abuse. But obviously, children have adults, ha- ha- have parents who are adult victims of domestic abuse. And children are discussed at MARAC. And many of you will have uh participated in this process or at least provided information. Uh, to contribute to the MARAC, uh, when, when Gemma's contacted you to request that. So I think, uh, again, it's just helpful for you to know the data on it really and, and, and have some understanding of the context. So as you can see there, we had uh just under three thousand, three hundred children discussed at MARAC last year. A, a slight increase on the previous year. And uh, I always say this, but we have, uh, you know, we have brilliant engagement around this process. Uh, well, around all safeguarding, I would say, and I mean that genuinely from, from all our settings. Um, but as you can see there, ninety-six percent of forms were returned in time. And that, that's a fantastic achievement in the, uh, you know, in the grand scheme of things with everything else you're, you're dealing with. Um, that nineteen percent of cases being repeat referrals, uh. I, I'm going to look into that a bit more, because I'm just in tra- interested in that figure really. I mean, it's not out of um, out of line with the national data. But uh, I, I think that would just be interesting to do a bit more on picking there. And I've not had a chance to do it since receiving uh these, these figures, but uh, I, I might come back to that with you at a later stage. And you can see there, there were six hundred and fifty-four actions set for schools. Um, that is usually around informing, you being asked to inform MARAC. If the perpetrator appears to be back on the scene or back in the home. And often education settings will pick that up because they'll be dropping children off, picking them up, et cetera. Um, or the children will be talking about whoever, um, being back in the home. Uh, 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 and around, uh, around the home. So we're well placed to pick up that information. And four hundred and six children were represented by, uh, with school attendants, uh, at the MARAC last year. And, and we continue to get really, really good feedback about schools' contribution to the MARAC process. Because you know, we know this, that you know a lot about the children, you know a lot about the families. And that information is really valuable in terms of informing and supporting the risk assessment and plan. Uh, when it's being discussed at the conference. And lastly on that slide is a link to the referral form into the MARAC process. Because you as professionals may be made aware of domestic abuse that no one else is aware of. If the parent, if the victim chooses to disclose to you, for example. Or if the, um, if the children disclose, uh, domestic abuse to you. I mean, of course, if the, if the child disclosed, you'd be making a referral into the Children and Families Hub if, if that's appropriate. If it's meeting uh the level for that. But actually, you, you may have information that does need to go uh direct to, to the MARAC. Uh, and into the MARAC team. So uh, so there's the referral form in case you need access to that. Thanks, Derry. So again, you will know that we have to report via a safeguarding audit to the Essex Safeguarding Children Board. And um, we do this on a two-year reporting basis. And uh, we, we are in the academic year again where we need to do that. So the last time the audit was undertaken was twenty-two, twenty-three. And I thought it, it's just helpful to recap on the, uh, the, the, the sort of findings from the audit last time. Uh, I'm not being negative in focusing on the lower scoring areas, because there were lots of very positive areas. But actually, just in terms of feedback, it's more helpful to look at these um particular topics. Because I can tell you what we've done about them. Uh, and, and really, uh, linked to that, I just want to show you that all the audits are read, we do use them. It's not just a tick box exercise. Because you'll see from what I'm going to talk about in a minute, that we do respond to the lower scoring themes from the audit. And they, it, it does inform our work, uh, in terms of what we provide for, for you around training, around resources. So uh, thi- this is a meaningful exercise. Uh, don't think it just sits on a shelf somewhere, well, on a laptop somewhere now, it's not a paper copy, but, uh, but, but they are used. So, uh, as you can see there, the lower scoring areas, uh, a couple of years ago was uh, uh, around safeguarding governance. And as a result of that, we introduced the termy safeguarding briefings for governors. So we continue to run those. It's an hour online each term. And uh, we had the last one last week, I think. Again, I lose track of time, it all goes so quickly. Um, so please just check that either your safeguarding governor or your chair of governors is accessing. That uh, that online session, because it is important that they receive support around their safeguarding role. Their strategic oversight of safeguarding. And uh, 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 and again, we get good feedback from those sessions from governors. But uh, it would be helpful for you to uh just prompt them in that respect. DSL supervision, you'll know that social care have introduced their. Um, so DSL supervision programme now. Uh, I've got uh, uh, an email address for that on a later slide. But again, that was something that came out as a lower score. I do speak to governors a lot about DSL supervision, so uh, uh, the termly online briefing, it was covered again. And Claire Kershaw also holds a termly conference for governors online. I always have a safeguarding slot on that, and again, uh, I talked about it there. So if you are not a head teacher, do speak to your head teacher about supervision. And if you are a head teacher, do speak to your chair of governors, because it's really important that. As a DSL, which is a really demanding and challenging role. Um, and a very stressful role, actually, i- it's really important that you receive appropriate su- supervision and support with that. So you're perfectly entitled to, to ask for it. And pupil voice and feedback came out as relatively low, which was a bit surprising. Um, because we've done quite a lot of work around that in terms of um harmful sexual behaviour. So we have, uh, we have done some work uh, uh, around this. We did update the harmful sexual behaviour guidance, but pupil voice is wider than just harmful sexual behaviour. Um, in terms of safeguarding, again, it's important that you do speak to children in your school to find out if they feel safe. And if they don't, are there areas that they don't feel safe in, uh, geographical and otherwise? Um, but it is an important part of your safeguarding arrangement. So hopefully that will come out as a bit higher scoring this time round. The Set Partnership Exploitation Pathway, uh, there, people weren't aware of that. Uh, we have, we have shared it with settings and it is on the ESCB website. But I know there are so many documents and things around that you are having to be uh familiar with. It's actually in the process of being updated though, so we will, um, we will share that with you once the new format has been finalised. And linked to that, Alex will talk about it in a minute, she'll give you the date. But it is, um, we'll cover it at the risk in the community training that we're offering in March. So again, one of the reasons for the risk in the community training that we're putting on. Is because of the findings from the safeguarding audit and people's confidence around child exploitation. Uh, use of risk assessments around harmful sexual behaviour, and again, I was a bit surprised at that. Uh, because we've really promoted using risk assessments specifically in relation to that particular area of work. Haven't got time to go into it here, because it's a whole separate training session. And we do offer uh harmful sexual behaviour training, uh, termly. Again, Alex will give you the dates in a minute, but it's absolutely vital that you do use risk assessments where there's been an incident of HSB. And that's around the victim and around the perpetrator. And again, we've updated the guidance around that, the, the HSB guidance. And there are uh templates within that guidance document to support you with that. Staff training around physical intervention. So Steve Whitfield and I did um some research into organisations that offer physical intervention training. And uh, and in fact, and again, you will know this many of you, and there's an email address on uh one of the slides coming up. Uh, that we now have a business partnership with um an organisation called Price. So they are our preferred provider in offering physical intervention and restraint training. They are completely independent of Essex. We, there's no financial benefit in it for us. But we felt that their approach was the best fit with TPP and with our expectations around safeguarding. And while I'm talking about that, just to make you aware that the Understanding and Supporting Behaviour Document has also been updated. There is a new version on Essex Schools Info Links, so again, do have a look at that. It's been updated with um, uh, you know, all the links and things. Uh, and references to statutory guidance have been updated. But uh, but the document itself, the guidance and templates, there have been some changes as well. Uh, mental health and wellbeing, I think there has been uh, uh, an improvement in that. We've had really good take-up in Essex around the mental health lead funding for training. And uh, that, that's over ninety percent, I think, in primary and secondary sector. So again, I expect that to um, to come out a bit higher this time. And then lastly on there is uh, is around hate incidents and hate crime. We are doing some, uh, uh, we're pulling together a guidance document around prejudice-related incidents. And uh, it, it's been on the to-do list for a long time, actually. I was hoping to have it out with schools uh by now, have it out to schools, not with schools. Um, have it out to schools by now, but again, we've just not had an opportunity to, to finish that piece of work. It's a big piece of work, so we will have that with you, I hope, by um, for, for, for next September. Uh, once we're fully staffed, but it will be a guidance document along the lines of our um. Uh, our, our other guidance documents, so we will pull together all the statutory guidance around. And uh, and, and pull together the key information from, from that. And then there'll be a range of resources to go out with them, uh, with the, with the document. So we'll look at a level two presentation for you to take out to your staff, a model policy. And uh, reporting templates, et cetera, because what, what we want, what the audit proved last time. Was that there is no consistency in reporting. Um, and I'm not sure how confident schools are always in identifying, appropriately identifying prejudice-related incidents. And whether there is an appropriate response to that, and that's not to be critical of anyone, it's a difficult area. Uh, and I think schools need some support and training around that. So we, we continue to look at that and we'll bring that to you in the next couple of terms. Thanks, Derry. Uh, sorry, and just to say, um, that that was reported to the ESCB as well, uh, to the Executive Board. In uh, in December twenty-three, so again, the, it, these audits are looked at and talked about. So in terms of this year's audit, we're just finalising the format and the content now. And you will have the whole of the spring term to complete that. It will need to be back to the ESCB, ESCB by the, uh, by the end of the spring term. We will get it out to you uh before, uh, before the start of next term though. Not, not that I'm expecting anyone to be looking at it over the Christmas holidays. But we will get it to you in the next uh two to three weeks, hopefully. Uh, as I say, we're just finalising the content now. Important just to point out that every setting needs to complete uh the audit. So if you are in a MAT, you, it's not okay to um, to send an audit back for all the MAT schools. It's got to be on an individual setting. For obvious reasons really, because each setting. For obvious reasons, really, because each setting will look slightly different in terms of their safeguarding and be at different stages in terms of their safeguarding. So in terms of the format, you can add additional text if you want to. And that means you can print off an action plan at the end of the process, once you've completed the audit. Again, if you want to, there's no requirement to do that because you can just go through and answer the questions. But if you want to use it as a document and an action plan, then you can do that. I think it's, I mean, many schools complete this audit. We do update it every year because many schools use it every year anyway as a as a checklist and as a self evaluation. So we will continue to do that annually. It's just that every other year you have to return it to the ESCB. I would suggest you you do the audit with your safeguarding governor and or with the chair. So think about how you will want that to work in your school. And I would report it back to governors as well. You can use it as a formal report to governors in terms of your safeguarding arrangements. And again, you know, in terms of how you undertake that in school, you can do it just as DSL and safeguarding governor or, you know, DSL and deputies, you'll decide how it best works to you. And as I say, it needs to be back by the by the end of the spring term. Thank you. So I'm not going to go through this in detail, but we've just put together a few slides here on a WhatsApp group called Add Everyone. And it's really just to make you aware that this is around at the moment. We've had a couple of primary schools who've been affected by this where their children have put all their contacts or invited all their contacts to join a WhatsApp group. And actually, those groups are then used by adults wanting access to children. Either and they're being used to either provide direct access between adults and children, or they are posting and or they are posting illegal material on there. So there's some really graphic material, beheadings, for example, and and also illegal images, indecent images of children. So I'm not suggesting that you write out to parents about this because I think it's always a balance to be achieved between not promoting it and not raising awareness about it. But if you do pick up that, that if you're hearing this language amongst your pupils and or your parents, then there's just some advice on there about how to respond. But as I say, it's really just to raise your awareness about it in case you've not not picked it up elsewhere. Okay, Derry, thanks if you just go through those. There is some general online advice there. So you you can you might want to copy and paste that into into a newsletter. If you include online safety advice for parents, then again, that might be helpful. Thanks, Derry. Okay, so lastly for me, just a couple of other bits, really. The information sharing advice for practitioners guidance has been updated. So when you get slides, you should have the the links will hopefully work. And that's quite a useful document. The previous one was quite out of date, actually. But particularly if you are a newer DSL, that that will be a useful document for you to look at. We have a new document to support settings with managing high levels of risk for some young people with mental health issues. And we know that some young people come on site, come into school and are you know, self harming to quite a significant extent, actually. So they are cutting quite severely. They are ligature ring. And that those cases are very anxiety provoking. They're very stressful. Again, it's really important you have a risk assessment around those young people and multi agency risk assessment. But this guidance document is pulling together advice and guidance around that to support settings and signposting to other support services and referral routes. So please do have a look at that when it's available. It is with the design team at the moment, being being just fine. I mean, the content's been finalised, but it's just been put into fancy pants format, really. And then we will share it with you. And linked to that, there is the Let's Talk Promoting Positive Mental Health and Wellbeing. This, and as you can see there, it's reducing the risk of suicidal thoughts and feelings. This document replaces the previous reducing the risk of suicide guidance. Because in effect, it's now two documents rather than one, so that there's a more general advice around lower level risk, mental health concerns and and then, as I say, the the managing risks. So it makes sense to have them into different documents, really. So they will both come out to you in the very near future. It will be before Christmas. And just to make you aware that I'm doing some work with the Violence Against Women and Girls Strategic Board around online harm. And we are looking at developing some resources to support curriculum delivery around online harm. I won't go into that in detail now. I'll I'll bring that to you at a later date. But I just wanted you to be aware that that's something that we are looking at currently. There's the email address there if you were interested in the DSL supervision programme with social care. They have now appointed someone and I believe that they intend to start the programme properly from January. That that was the latest update I had. So if you if you are interested, you can contact them via that email address. And then lastly on that slide is I've put a link there for something. I've not read it in detail because I only received it last week. But it's around, a couple of weeks ago, it's an NSPCC resource around voice of the child. So linked to what I was just saying in terms of how you gather voice of the child, then that might be something that's helpful to you. As I say, I had a quick look at it. It looked quite useful, I think, but I've not looked at it in detail. Okay, thanks, Derry. And Crime and Policing Bill. So just to make you aware of of other things that are around. This bill is to reduce to reduce serious violence and also to increase confidence in police and the criminal justice service. So you will be aware, there's been many high profile cases of police officers who committed criminal offences. And there is an issue around confidence in the police force that's all well published, isn't it, in in media? So you will have seen all that for yourself. So that bill is going through the the usual processes currently. The Stable Homes Built on Love is the social care strategy from the previous government. So it is still around, but there is not a lot of talk about it at the moment. And I'm not sure whether that will be taken over by other work by the new government. To a certain extent, some of that will be covered in the Children and Wellbeing Bill. So again, I'll update on that at a later date as and when we know more. But of course, you you're all aware of the Children's Wellbeing Bill that has that has come in since been introduced by the current government when they took over. The Reasonable Force and Restraint Research Report is something you may find interesting to read. But again, just to make you aware, that was research that was undertaken on practice in special schools. And my understanding is that it was to be used to inform updating the DFE guidance, use of physical, use of reasonable force in in education settings. Again, that's all gone quite quiet. So I'm not sure whether the change of government will have any impacts on that or what is happening with that. Again, we'll bring you updates as and when we have it. But that, the the current use of reasonable forces is very out of date now. The Price Training is the physical intervention training. And if you were interested in more information on that, you can email the SCMH team on that email address. And then lastly, the Gender Questioning Guidance. Again, this has all gone very quiet. I've not picked up anything around this since the draft document that that was shared in December twenty three. Again, I don't know what the new government will do with that consultation. Well, with the with the draft guidance. There was a lot of discontent about the the guidance when it was published and many organisations shared their discontent with the with the content of the guidance document. So again, whether the new government will look at that and whether it will be changed, we don't know at this moment. So the draft guidance is out there for use. There are some guiding principles in it, but I will repeat really what I've said previously, that if you are if you are having to deal with any sort of complex cases in terms of that, then then you can reach out to us. That's that's fine. And we're happy to support around those. Okay, I think that's all from me, but I'll find out when Derry goes on to the, oh, no, that's not all from me. So lastly from me, I think, is the Two Johns Safety, e-Safety, Online Safety Training video that they do. So we're really appreciative that they continue to record this for us each term, for us to share via the briefings. And we will continue to do that. I think people are still finding them useful. And they, I know many of you take them back into your setting and use them within your setting. So the link there is for the video for this term and and their website. The link to their website is there as well. I know many of you do direct work with the Two Johns and they're they're really great. We work closely with them. Okay, thank you, Derry. And I think, yes, I am now handing over to Alex, who's just going to give you. Is there anything in the chat? Sorry, before I do that, anything to pick up on?
No, nothing, nothing that we haven't answered. So.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, over to you, Alex.
So I'm literally going to rattle through this so that Liz can bring you the effective support information. Thank you, Derry. So the first thing to talk about is the Level Three training that we are now providing. We have had some really good feedback on the five or six sessions that we've done already. We are holding the line at face to face for this, as we really do believe that you need to be coming out of your setting in order to be able to access this. It gives you the opportunity to talk to one another, to share good practice, and it means you're not interrupted whilst you're trying to concentrate on on what is really important training. It's important to say that this isn't Level Two rehashed. This is about your strategic lead role as the DSL. And we spend the day thinking about how you can develop your role in in that strategic way. So we have some dates for next term. Thank you, Derry. And then we have the dates for the summer term. We are yet to confirm the venues for those, but as soon as we've got them, we will we will get them out to you via one of the bulletins so that you can get booked on to those. Thank you. And then just briefly, one or two things. We've got Prevent Awareness and Update and Harmful Sexual Behaviour. Those sessions, you don't need to attend every term if you don't want to. They are very similar each term. However, you might want to use them as an option for developing other members of staff, or if you want to refresh it, then you can come along to those. They are really what they say on the tin. The Prevent Online Radicalisation is actually being run by the police. And that is again what it says. So about preventing children from becoming radicalised online, as Jo said earlier, Prevent really now is all in the online arena, or as most of it anyway. So that's coming up the rest of this term. Thank you, Derry. Those are the dates for the Spring Term Briefing. Obviously, you get the slides, you'll be able to pick those up. Thank you, Derry. And then Spring Term Training, everything on there is the same. Just to point out, Cyber Choices is again run by the police and that is around stopping. And it's a programme that the police run to support children who are beginning to make the wrong choices online, getting in there early and helping them to realise that they can use their amazing IT skills in a much more positive way. So that's a great piece of training. Risk in the Community for Schools, again, will be alongside our Risk in the Community team. And we'll look at all the work that's going on around risk in the community and what to look out for. The venue is actually Chelmsford with the football club that has been confirmed and that will be going live, hopefully, this week or next week at the latest. Mossovo and MAPPA is the Management of Sexual and Violent Offenders and the Management, no, the Multi-Agency
Protection Arrangements.
There we go. Thank you, Jo. I knew you'd step in. And that again is being run by the police and is all around how the police manage sexual offenders and violent offenders within the community and around children and around risk assessing that and and how they they manage all of that. Another safeguarding briefing for governors there. We're nearly there. Summer Term Briefings are all on there. Thank you, Derry. And then I think the only one on this one in the summer term, we are running the It Could Happen Here training again. I don't know if any of you've done it previously. We run that alongside one of the Laddos. It's a brilliant piece of training about how you can manage and set a really safe environment for your school and is all to do with allegations and low level concerns within your workforce. And that is a brilliant piece of training. So I think that might be it. And then, well, Liz has got twenty minutes. There we go. Brilliant. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Afternoon, everybody. I will try and whizz through as quick as I can. If I don't get to the end, the slides will be shared with you. So you can get the learning that way anyway. My name's Liz Kirby. I'm the Practice Development Manager for Essex Safeguarding Children Board. Thanks, Derry. Working Together Twenty Eighteen introduced multi agency safeguarding arrangements and Twenty Twenty Three introduced some further changes. And all the safeguarding partnerships have been requested to undertake a review of their master arrangements and publish those by the end of the year. So those will be published on our website by the by the end of this year on the ESCB website. Essex continues to use Essex Safeguarding Children Board. And the purpose of the master arrangements is to ensure that at a local level organisations are clear about how they will work together to safeguard and children and promote their welfare. So the safeguarding partners are Essex Police, Essex County Council and the three ICB care boards, so the Integrated Care Boards in Essex. They are Suffolk and North East Essex, Hearts and West Essex, Mid and South Essex ICB. And they're the STAT Partners who work together to safeguard and promote the welfare of children in the local area and includes and developing the wider role of other organisation and agencies. So the ESCB Executive has a wide range of partners in attendance and they're referred to as relevant agencies and include probation, education and the community and voluntary sectors. Thanks, Derry. Working Together Twenty Twenty Three introduced Lead Safeguarding Partners. And they're the Chief Executive of the Local Authority, the Chief Chief Officer of the Three Integrated Care Boards and the Chief Constable of Essex Police. And they all have a nominated delegated safeguarding partner who can take decisions on their behalf. And Working Together Twenty Twenty Three states that all local education and childcare providers working with children up to eighteen are expected to be included as those relevant agencies. Thanks, Derry. And this is how the setup looks. So at the top there, you've got the delegated safeguarding partners. And then you've got the executive board that Jo was talking about earlier. So education's represented there by the Director of Education, by Jo, and by the Head Teachers Association. So the primary, secondary and special schools. And then following from those groups, you've got the subcommittees and the Stay Safe Groups who meet quarterly, head teacher meetings and the safeguarding briefings. So the information is travelling in both directions. It should be sort of arrows in two ways, going in and out of there in how we get the information. So Jo will be there talking about the things that are impacting schools and the difficulties that are being had, but also talking about all the good work that that you do. And Matt Lewis is the representative at Stay Safe. Um, so he looks at the local uh um issues within the smaller, within the quarters. Thanks, Derek. So we have just completed the um update of our threshold document. So the E S C B Effective Support for Children and Families in Essex document. The process has taken a long time. It started two years ago in autumn twenty-two, when there was an online survey about the use of the guidance. Um, what people would like to see, what would be helpful. And then we reviewed other local safeguarding children partnerships threshold documents and had a look at what we liked and what we didn't like. And the working group was um put together and that's the statutory partners, but also education and E S C B support staff. And we met lots of times um to look through the document. We also had three consultation opportunities. Um, I know that they, they came out to schools as well. So thank you for those people that did um complete, send us some feedback on that. It was really useful to see different people's points of view and we spoke to lots of different services and experts to really try and make sure that we could make a document that worked for everybody that would be using it. And then once we were happy with that document, it was agreed by the statutory partners and all the agencies represented at E S C B Executive. Thanks, Derek. So why did it need updating? To bring it into line with current practice, to really strengthen the early help content. So all the evidence suggests, and we all know that if we can intervene really early on, as soon as a problem starts to occur, as soon as support's needed, that's the best opportunity to turn that around and to prevent a further escalation of concerns or worries. So that was really a, a focus for us. Um, we needed to review the indicators of need to make sure they reflected current terminology and practice and then also to reflect the changes in Working Together twenty-three. Thanks, Derek. The Effective Support Windscreen, it remains, the levels remain the same. So it's still universal, additional, intensive and specialist. But we tried to make it a little bit more reflective of the needs. So we made the universal area much bigger because the vast majority of children are able to manage with just the services um that everybody's entitled to. So like G P, leisure services, access to education. And then the next level of additional needs where children need a little bit of extra help and at this point an early help plan's useful and consideration to team around the family meetings. And we'd be looking at the directory services to look at all the different services that are able to support us at that level. And then in the orange there, the intensive level where we really need a multidisciplinary approach because the needs of the family and children are really so complex um that they need that multi-agency working and services that sit there would include family solutions. And then right at the top there, the red level, the specialist support is really for just that small number of children who need statutory um intervention. So examples of those would be children's social care or youth offending. But what we need to sort of remember is that children's needs are not static and they'll move during their lifetime. Some will remain in universal the whole time, but some might move up and need different support, but move back down again. So it's just an ever-changing. Um, it's, we're always assessing what the need is. And also, some children may be more at risk just due to disability or complex needs and the parental response to that vulnerability. So that needs to be a part of our assessment as to where the needs sit. Thanks, Derek. So we based our indicators of need on the assessment framework from Working Together twenty-three. As you can see there, there's three sections, parenting capacity, child's developmental needs and family and environmental factors. And then within those sections, there's lots of subheadings there. So we initially worked to all of those subheadings. But what we discovered was there was quite a lot of duplication and quite a lot of the areas overlapped each other. So it didn't really work to keep it, to keep them under those headers. So the headers have changed now because we wanted to make sure that the report was as concise as possible and to prevent that duplication. But this is what we based it on. Thanks, Derek. So that's what the effective support document looks like. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at that, but if you haven't, please go and have a look through. Um, much better to familiarise yourself beforehand than when there's something actually happening um and you're, and you're needing support straight away. But as you can see, it tells you it's the October twenty twenty-four version. If you just bookmark it rather than printing it off, you'll always know that you're using the most up-to-date version. Um, it's also easier to use online because there's lots of links. So it takes you directly to each, to the section that you might want to be looking at. Uh, there's more emphasis on early help, as I've said. And because it's online, if links change and things like that, we're able to just do those smaller updates as we go. So we can keep the document more up to date. Thanks, Derek. And this is what one of the pages looks like. So you would have come to, there's a contents page to start with. And under that contents page, you'd look for indicators of need. And then in this case, we're looking at physical health um parents, carers. So you'd click onto that section and it would take you straight here. And as you can see, it follows the windscreen. So you've got the, in the green, you've got the universal needs and then right across up to the specialist needs on the right. In the title there, if there's any documents that we think might be helpful to you, we've put links into those as well. So in this one, we've put a link to the um perplexing presentation fabricated or induced illness in the set procedures so that you can go and have a look at that. And on the side is the subheadings um to make it a little bit easier for you to identify where you, where you need to look. So on the left, we're looking at parents and carers take full interest in the child's appearance and importance of hygiene. They're making sure that they go to all their appointments, including the dental appointment. And then right over to the other side, we're looking at evidence of serious neglect, including failure to meet a child's medical needs resulting in significant risk and harm to the child. So if we're looking at that area, or all of the sections, we're really just looking at what's happening within the family and what is the impact on the child. And that's the thing that we really try to concentrate on. Um. So on the sort of level two, you'll be looking in your, if you identify that's where your need sits, you'll be looking in the Directory of Services for that. But if we're looking at making a request for support, we'd be looking at the intensive needs and specialist needs and really evidencing how, what's happening and what the impact of that is on the child. Thanks, Derek. So when we're recording information about children and families, it's really important to make sure that we're including relevant histories. So we're including there what early help's been provided, what's worked with a family previously, what hasn't worked with a family. Um, information that can help other services to understand the family as well. So it might be about cultural needs or it might be about something that's really important to the family that could help other services. What's the parent carer looking, asking for? What help are they saying that they need? Recording any consultations that you've had and making sure you put what the, what's happened out of that consultation. And then if we're making statements, really important to give clarification about what we actually mean. So rather than just saying that a child looks really withdrawn, adding that little bit of extra information, they don't engage with other pupils, they sit on their own. Maybe put a little bit about how they are with um staff members um what their behaviours like around those. And then when we're talking underweight there, putting a little bit more so that we know what our actual concern is. So when asked about breakfast, he states he's not had any. So are we thinking about if the family got enough money so that they're able to be fed properly? Are we looking at neglect? What is it that we're actually worrying about and what is, we've put what the impact is on the child? They're underweight. But what are the specific things that we're worried about there? And being curious and always asking questions. Thanks, Derek. So if we ensure that the concerns are listed really clearly and concisely and includes what the impact is. If we're working at an early help level, but we're recording all this information, that's what we can use if we come to to a level where we are going to be needing additional support and we're putting in a request to the Children and Families Hub. So make sure that we're including the voice of the child. What, what's the child saying? Put it in direct speech. Understanding the different ways that children communicate with us. Quite often, like adults, they find it difficult to describe what it is that's happening to them. And we often see when something's happened, we see it in a child's behaviour. So noting those behaviour changes. Um, is there anything significant happening in that child's life? Has someone new moved into the family? What are those behaviours trying to tell us? And really, I think sometimes if we put that support in when we see the behaviour changes, rather than waiting for the child to tell us what's happened, the child notices that and they then feel more confident, oh, they've noticed that something's wrong. And it makes that conversation easier for them when they come to be being able to tell us what's happened to them. Thanks, Derek. So alongside the threshold document is also a workflow to help you with um where, where you can get support. So at the top, we're looking at just um the setting, having a meeting with the family. And then we're going on to the consultation opportunities, like contacting the TAF. So maybe going to an early help drop-in and giving an anonymous case there and getting the support. Lots of different services sit there. So it's a really good opportunity to get advice from different people and different ideas. And then you've got the Set Cam's consultation line. And then further down, Directory of Services, as we've mentioned, and frontline. And then you've got some, the send information and information and advice and the local offer. And the Essex Child and Family Wellbeing Service, early help templates. And further down on that, that's the top part of this workflow, but fur- further down will be the um details of then if it becomes to a point where we're concerned um about significant harm, then we're contacting the Children and Families Hub. So on the link that's in, that's going to be sent out to you in the slides, both of those documents, the threshold document and this workflow document will be in that same place. So if you bookmark that and keep it, you'll be able to link straight to any of these um additional resources. Thanks, Derek. So the E S C B um have got some of the functions of them are develop multi-agency policies and procedures to participate in the planning of children's services and raising awareness around um safeguarding. But one of the things that we um, that we do is complete reviews, including child safeguarding practice reviews. So when a child dies or is seriously harmed as a result of abuse or neglect, a, a review may be conducted to identify ways that professionals and organisations can improve the way they work together to safeguard children and prevent similar incidents. Um, the whole purpose of the reviews is to try and find ways that although we're doing things the best that we can at that time, are there ways that we can make children safer? Are there policies and procedures that need to change and are there things that are stopping us from being able to um to safeguard these children? So in two thousand and eighteen, uh, serious case reviews became child safeguarding practice reviews. Um, the statutory partners are responsible for considering whether to carry out a child safeguarding practice review. So they'll look at the rapid review stages to whether they think there's some new learning to come out and, and whether it is appropriate to do that review. And the National Panel was an independent panel who commissioned reviews of C S P Rs. And that panel meets regularly to decide whether to commission um a review and they'll base their decision on um the possibility of identifying improvements from cases which they see as complex or either of national importance. The last report that they published was the twenty-two, twenty-three one. And they'd had three hundred and ninety-three serious incident notifications. And some of the things that are sort of that came from that review that I thought were particularly relevant, um especially for schools, was that forty percent of the school-aged children were either not enrolled in a school or they had really low attendance. So that just tells us how much schools and education settings are doing to ensure that children are much safer. Um, fifty percent of those three hundred and ninety-three um notifications, there was um the presence of domestic abuse within the household. So that's a really high level there. There were twelve percent where of incidents which involved gang-related and youth violence. And one of the things they identified there was that practitioners were focused on the problematic behaviour, but they didn't really see it, this as a sign of exploitation and they didn't understand the complexity and the danger that the children were in. So one of the things that came from that was for them to ask us to be wary of adultification. Thanks, Derek. So the learning starts as soon as the incident has been identified and that starts with internal practices within the individual agencies. Um. Then the learnings identified through the rapid review process and that's shared with agencies. So even if we don't go on to do a child safeguarding practice review at that point, we're still looking at all that learning and trying to, trying, trying to learn through that. So the themes and the learning emerges throughout and the key learning is highlighted in a final report which supports the final recommendations and that report is disseminated to agencies who are then responsible for sharing that further. Thanks, Derek. And so this is the most recently published one. Jo, I'm aware that I've got two minutes left.
Yes, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that it's um, it, it's been a rush for you. Um, we, we'll send the slides out to save you you know, rushing, rushing through it in that way. Um, if anyone wants to stay on, please do. Um, but I don't want to keep everyone if you were, um, if you were planning to leave because we did say we'd finish at five. So I'm happy to stay on unless we can continue because we're recording and it can go out with, with, with the full video. But um for those of you who do want to leave at five, thank you for joining us this afternoon for the uh, for the online briefing and um I hopefully see you next term either in person or at the next online one. And I, I have a lovely Christmas break when it, when it gets here. Thank you. I'll, I'll hand back over to you, Liz, okay?
Thanks, Jo. I'll just, I won't, I'll try and keep this as succinct as possible, probably like between five or ten minutes, um just to go through this last one. So um Child Def was eight years old when she was taken to hospital, unresponsive and with no respiration and pa- pulse. She was in a really extremely poor medical state, um malnourished, anaemic, unkempt, and she had really significant head lice. And when I say significant head lice, she'd had head lice for her whole life, her whole eight years. And she remained in that critical condition for some time before she recovered, but she is now thriving in a foster care placement. Child Def lived with four older siblings and her mother. Um, but the siblings are now subject to care orders. She had regular contact with her dad and older brother, but she didn't live with them. The family were involved with services on and off from the time that Child Def's brother was three years old and both mum pleaded guilty and father was found guilty of several counts of neglect and both were sentenced to six years in prison. Thanks, Derek. So there were three areas of learning that came out. The first one was evidence in neglect. So services were first involved fifteen years before the critical incident, before Child Def was taken to hospital. Um, Child Def and her sib- siblings experienced head lice, no beds and bedding, no hot meals, inadequate personal hygiene, really messy homes. But when I say messy homes, at an extent where they were repeatedly evicted. And Child Def had speech and language um significant delays. And this was identified when she was three years old, but she didn't go to any appointments until she was aged seven. So if we're looking at that, when we were looking at the threshold document not being brought to appointments, she's really in that red area, four years' worth and that significant impact of her and not having that support. Thanks, Derek. The second area was around responding to neglect. So uh services were involved, involved for fifteen years. Um, each time services were involved, the situation would improve and then services withdrew. And I think we do really see this quite often where um the family would then be re-referred after the situation deteriorated again. So some thought around how we can really bring around that change that is long-term and that doesn't deteriorate straight away again. And thought into that step-down process, when the services step away, who's gonna, which members of the family or which other services can we call upon, who can support with that area where there will no longer be anybody else there? The wider family did try to provide care for the children, but The wider family did try to provide care for the children, but what they found was that when they tried to, if they tried to step in and services weren't involved, mum and dad would block the numbers and wouldn't allow the children to have contact with them. So they really felt like they were walking on eggshells and they weren't really able to provide the support that they needed unless there was a service there saying that they should be doing that. The Child Safeguarding Practice Review concluded that if that critical incident hadn't have occurred, the children would still likely be living with mum. So in those really, you know, that's really quite a harsh reality for us to think about that had she not had to go to hospital because she was so ill, she would still be in that situation. Next slide, please, Derry. And then the last learning area was around families with ongoing needs. So the cumulative negative impact of children's living conditions was really significant. The family was regularly in and out of services with professionals closing them each time because either there was an improvement or because the family weren't engaging. Child Def's mother informed the local Child Safeguarding Practice Review that what she needed was someone to ensure she provided that adequate care. So she was actually acknowledging that she didn't feel that she was able to meet their needs. And the children fed back that they didn't understand what the services were for because nothing changed for them. Yeah, so I guess there's something there around the really trying to get the families engaged and get them working, working more long-term with us and really wanting that change themselves as well. So some of the other themes that have come from recent reviews, challenging decisions and escalating when needed, that really starts with us having those, having those conversations with people, with other professionals and being able to do that in a respectful way, so that we're able to talk to each other about, I don't understand how you've come to that decision, my thinking is this. And we can really all express to each other without being defensive or without being accusatory, we can really talk about what it is and why we're measuring the risks differently and what our opinions are. And if we're still not getting that response that we need, if we still feel that we need to escalate further using the set procedures, there's a link that I've put on further for that as well. Some people said that, like a lot of people when we put out a survey, said that they knew about the set procedures, but they felt like they didn't want to be seen as troublemakers or they'd have previous negative experience, or they felt that they weren't the expert. So for any of those, I always think that everybody holds their own heart of information about children and families. And in education, you hold so much because you see children every day and you see families quite frequently as well. So you hold such a lot of education. And that, if that's your view, that that needs to be escalated, you really need to do that and use those set procedures. And I know that Jo and her team will support if you're feeling like you're unable to do that. I know that they've done that with really good results in the past. Thinking about the whole family approach, how can we help the parents? If we can help the parents with something that they're having difficulties with, that in turn helps the, helps the child. And thinking about all members of the family. So we've got a new document that will be coming out soon, a thinking tour around engaging father figures, because that's been seen as an area that we're missing, focusing on mum and not thinking about dad or other, or partners, significant male figures in the home. Evidence change within the family and how this will be sustained, we've talked about, we've talked about the importance of the early help. There's been a thematic review into teenage suicides, and the learning from that will be shared during our conferences that we're holding in April and March. So please look out for those and book onto those to find out more about the recommendations there. Mental health of young people, parents and carers, increasing awareness of the set procedures across the workforce. So that's the procedures for Southend, Essex and Furrick, the child protection safeguarding procedures for the multi-agency, and there's a link for that later in the slides. Case recording and decision-making, so that importance of recording our information, making sure we write down why we make the decisions we do, why we don't take some action, just so that we've got all that recorded as to why we have or haven't taken a certain action. Parental mental health and substance misuse, assessment context and family history, so thinking about genograms and what things might be really impacting young people's mental health and wellbeing, children not being brought to appointments. And voice of the child, Jo's mentioned several times tonight, and we've got resources on our website as well around to support you with really making sure you capture that voice of the child. And then staying curious, we've got, professional curiosity always comes out of reviews, and we've got an e-learning package that's available for free also on our website to try and help you to think about all the different possibilities in a situation, because we sometimes tend to be just, we think in one way and then can be setting our thinking and not explore other options. Thanks, Derry. So there's the slide about the resources for voice of the child that I've mentioned to you about. Next, Derry. And some of our opportunities coming up, we've, we've gone past the Children and Families Hub input on the twelfth of November, but we've got Family Solutions session on the eleventh of December. And then we've got an input about modern slavery, which will be a really interesting one, and that's in January. But if you have a look at the site, all the details will be on there. There's early help workshops and how to create an early help plan, Every Contact Counts, which is about exploitation and modern slavery. And then there's a drug and alcohol awareness, talking about the new trends in drug and alcohol, and that's the fifteenth of January. And as I said, the e-learning packages, we've got professional curiosity and we've also got one about non-accidental injury. And then we've got our Stay Safe conferences in spring. But there's lots of learning, free learning opportunities on our website and lots of resources, so please take a look at that. Thanks, Derry. And that's the links that I was talking about, and that's it. Sorry to have kept you longer for those that have stayed. Thank you for staying, but if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Liz. And, and it's not your fault that you went over. It was, it's a lot to pack into an hour and a half, so, so not your fault at all. As you can see there, there's just the early help poster for the, of the poster for the early help drop-ins as well. We've talked a lot about multi-agency approach today, and actually those sessions are very helpful for you to take cases to and receive multi-advice from a range of professionals around how to move cases forward. So apologies, we have gone ten minutes over, but I hope the session today has been helpful for you and thank you for joining us. Best wishes, bye-bye.